Can you hear us? Oh, there we go.
Okay.
Okay, well, we'll come to order. And here at the Sumter City Council, we open every meeting with an invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag. Out of respect for the diversity of opinion and beliefs in our community, we will begin this evening's invocation with a moment of silence, as we do every meeting. And during that moment of silence, each of us will be free to pray, contemplate, or not, as each person wishes. After this moment of silence, Councilman Steve Corley will pray in accordance with his faith. Councilman Corley, he will then lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance after the prayer. We can stand, please.
I would like to read a very old prayer, an 800-year-old prayer by Saint Francis of Assisi. "Lord, make us an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let us so love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is discord, union. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. Where there is sadness, joy. Grant that we may not so much seek to be consoled as to console. To be understood as to understand. To be loved as to love. For it is giving that we receive. It is in pardoning that we are pardoned." Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Corley, thank you for that. I've always loved this statement that has been attributed to Saint Francis, but I understand he didn't really say it, that he said, "Preach the gospel, use words only when necessary."
Right.
Moving on, we have our minutes of the June 2, 2020, regular meeting, as well as June 4 and 5 emergency meetings. I believe if there's no objection, we can handle those with one motion unless there are changes to be made in any one of them. Is there a motion?
Second.
Ms. Dwyer moves, and Mr. Lowery seconds that we approve all of the minutes, all three meetings, at this time as written. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And they are unanimously approved, that being June 2, June 4, and June 5 meetings. Next, moving into boards and commissions, if you will look at your package, you will see that we have three names that are up for ratification. Cynthia Conyers to the CHODO, or City of Sumter Housing and Economic Development Board, for a term of three years. Isaac M. Carr, appointment to the same board. And Michael Jonas to the IRS Festival Commission for a four-year term. These are reappointments, the clerk has confirmed. Yes, yes, ma'am.
One more that we need to add to that list.
Ms. Thompson. Yeah, and Greg Thompson to the Development Board. I spoke with Mr. Thompson. He is willing to continue service and is, I would ask that he be ratified as well. So we got Ms. Conyers to the CHODO, Mr. Carr to the CHODO, Mr. Jonas to the IRS Festival Commission, and Mr. Thompson to the Sumter Industrial Development Board. Is there a motion? Can we accept all of these in one motion?
I move for ratification of all the members to the designated boards and commissions.
Second.
Mr. Hasty moves, and Mr. Davis seconds that we ratify the three, the four names that are before us, as have been previously mentioned. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And they are approved unanimously, ratified unanimously. And I will notify them by letter of their appointment and thank them on behalf of City Council for their service. You will notice we have some more vacancies here. We have two still on the CHODO. No, do we have? What do we have now? Three, three on the CHODO that still are vacant?
Yes, sir, that's correct. Three on the CHODO.
You'll see down here at the bottom.
One on the Downtown Sumter Committee, and two on the Historic Preservation Design Review Committee.
And we got a name and an application today for the Historic Design Review Committee, but I will tell you about that if we, when we do executive session. Okay, so we need names for the CHODO, and you will notice that one of those names needs to be in the financial category. That would be a banker or someone like that. And two would, one would be, excuse me, two would be community, which low to moderate income area is the requirement.
On the CHODO, you say?
On the CHODO, yeah. Okay, moving on. Final reading of ordinance 2683, which is our City of Sumter's budget for fiscal year 2020. Mr. McCormick.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, there's been no changes since last time, but you will notice that the, Ms. Beth has provided, and Jonathan has provided us indirect cost allocation that shows you each year when we budget the indirect costs from the utility to the general fund, it's that particular number. But what you have is a breakdown to each department, kind of how it's allocated. So that's just good information for you, and I appreciate them sharing that with us. You'll see these things again, obviously, in audit time, when we look at budget versus audit. Be happy to answer any questions you may have, or Ms. Reams or Mr. Flincham are here for questions as well.
Any questions on this amendment to the 2020 budget? Is there a motion?
So move.
Mr. Davis moves, and Ms. Dwyer seconds that we give final reading to ordinance 2683, amending the fiscal year 2020 budget for the city. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And it is unanimously given final reading, that being ordinance number 2683. Next, considering our fiscal year 2021 budget, the proposal is for final reading of ordinance 2684. Mr. McCormick, aye?
Yes, sir. Again, there's been no changes since last time. We'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions on this? Is there a motion?
Move for final reading?
Second.
Motion is made by Mr. Merchant, second by Mr. Corley. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And it's passed unanimously. Moving into new business, hazardous mitigation plan, Consider Resolution 798, which would adopt the Santee Lynch's Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan for 2020 to 2025.
Mr. Mayor, just a few minutes ago, I spoke with the County Emergency Management Director, Mr. Hayes, just to go over the details of what this plan is. So as you saw in your email, and I know Mr. Davis may have printed his, but if you look, it's quite lengthy. It's a fairly large report. Let me tell you exactly what this is. This is a FEMA-approved plan that was done by our local emergency management office for the Santee Lynch's region. And what this really does, having the plan already approved by FEMA, once you adopt it, it allows the city for the next five years to compete for hazard mitigation. That's pre, pre and post mitigation. We'll tell you a little bit more about that. So if there's competitive grants because of a natural disaster, it allows us to access funds. And we've done this before. It's proved to be very helpful. It's very timely, very time-intensive process, but it sure does help when we can access some of this grant money. So you remember the HMGP grants that we've seen before? Those are hazardous mitigation improvement grants. So that's what this is, by you, again, adopting this resolution of this regional plan that's been approved by FEMA. It just allows us to actually compete for these grant funds when and if needed. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Corley moves, Mr. Lowery seconds that we give approval to Resolution Number 798, which is the Hazardous Mitigation Plan for 2020, 2025. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And Resolution 798 is unanimously approved. Next, we have consideration of emergency ordinances, 2685, 2686. These would, as I understand it, extend what we're already under. Anything to add to that, Mr. Corley?
No, sir. Mr. Mayor, you're correct. It extends it, but if need be, it doesn't have to, council doesn't have to use the whole time, but it just allows council to work. As we know, we're under the governor's emergency order, so we're just following suit to keep everything properly in order.
So remember, we will not meet, we will not meet the first meeting in July. So our next meeting will be mid-July. And this would run, this ordinance would run us through, what, mid-August, I guess. It runs us through our third meeting in August. We could go, we could decide to do regular meetings, or we could decide to move down to the Opera House Auditorium. We could make changes if we need to, but I believe we need to continue this. And just while we're on that, I called Michelle Logan Owens before I came over. To me right now, has 19 people in the hospital. That's right up at the highest they've had since this all began. Four are in ICU, 11 are hospitalized, and four are awaiting test results. Two-thirds of the, in Sumter, we've had 40% of our total number of cases diagnosed in the last 15 days. We've had 259 cases diagnosed in June. In the 77 days before that, we had 389 total cases. So who knows where this is heading? I think it's wise to. And you see, several of us were in masks. That's because we're in the category, and two-thirds of all deaths are to people who are over 71 years of age. That's two-thirds of the deaths, and we comprise 17% of the population. Forty-six percent of the deaths have been African-American. They comprise 26% of the population. So there are still dangers there, and I encourage all people in Sumter to continue practicing social distancing and wear a mask if you, if you can. So with that, is there a motion that we adopt resolutions, excuse me, ordinance 2685, the emergency ordinance? We'll do them one by one?
Yes, sir, because there's something we need to mention about the next one.
Move for adoption of 2685?
Mr. Hasty moves, is there a second? Second by Ms. Dwyer. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. And let me remind you, we need a, is it two-thirds vote on this?
Yes, sir.
Now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And Resolution Number 798 is, excuse me, 2685 is approved unanimously. Next, you said there's something you need to tell us about 2686?
Yes, sir. Just to remind council, we, your boards and commissions that you've had to extend those times, we have Planning, Historic Preservation, and Zoning Board of Appeals that will start meeting in the next couple of weeks. And what they are doing is, based on your approval of this, this next ordinance, of course, what they're do, they're proposing to do is meet in the Opera House Auditorium, where they can do spacing, we can separate seats, we're going to temperature check everyone that comes in, have masks for those who don't have it. But the boards, as you know, some have nine people on them, so using the stage to separate the boards as much as possible. They've done a lot of work to make sure administratively, they've done everything they can do, but it's very necessary for those boards to meet, to make some decisions, not to hold some critical projects up. So we're walking that line with, safety is first, so they want to do that. And then, so even at our next meeting in July, we've got some public hearings, so we may, before our next meeting, consider having that next meeting in the Opera House for spacing as well, just because we have those public hearings that are related to these planning and zoning issues. So just wanted to let you know what this next ordinance says, is it allows for those meetings to be suspended, or what's feasible, and it delegates that to me, to work with the department heads, to have those meetings. So namely, Planning, Zoning Board of Appeals, and Historic Preservation, just, again, we're needing to have those meetings, but I think staff has done a lot of good planning to keep people safe and healthy. So happy to answer any question.
Y'all will also consider that, perhaps, moving our meetings to down there?
At least the ones with the public hearings associated with those that have already happened with Planning and Historic Preservation. Again, Mayor, as you mentioned, it's a very fluid situation. We're hoping, as the virus pandemic kind of wanes, this will be less of an issue, but we're reminded to be sensitive, but also, we're weighing out the balance of the business need, the zoning need, to move some of these projects forward, as well as keep everybody safe in the meantime. So we're walking that line. That's what this ordinance would do, is allow you to extend it, but we could have those that we think we can, we can keep people safe and have it work, too. Some, I guess the shortest way to say this, is some of your boards and commissions meet less often, and it's a little less critical on the time sensitivity. Some are much more sensitive.
Any questions, Mr. McCormick? Is there a motion on ordinance 2686 for passage?
Move for approval of ordinance 2686.
Second.
Davis moves, Mr. Hasty seconds that we approve ordinance 2686. Is there discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And ordinance 2686 is approved unanimously. Next, we have two maintenance guarantees. First, we'll take up the guarantee on Section 5 of Stonecroft 2 subdivision. Mr. Harris?
Mr. Mayor, council members, the first one you have there is Metacroft Incorporated. This is Carl Croft, and it's for Stonecroft 2, Section 5. Everything is in order on that. Understand, these roads and everything belong to the county. The only thing we are accepting is the water line itself. So they give us a bill of sale to the water line, because prior to us accepting the water line, it belongs to the developer and the contractor. So we have a bill of sale for the water line, a perpetual 30-foot, a perpetual easement within the county's right-of-way, which the roads will be turned over to the county. So the water line is ours. Everything is in order. We have the 15% of the total cost of the water line, which is for the maintenance guarantee. That is $10,607, and we would like to recommend approval if you would like to do so. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
This is not in the city.
This is not in the city. It's in the county. And it's an extension of subdivisions that he's been working on for years.
Any, any questions?
Just want to review this. Was the design of the subdivision and the water, did it ever come through the, I mean, did the city approve the design at all? I remember several years ago, we had a situation, I don't, it was Deerfield, or it was Sunway Knolls, where we assumed responsibility for a poorly done, and I'm sure we've upgraded all of that, but I was just, I was just wondering, I hope we're not assuming something that is going to cause us trouble in the future. And when do we kind of balance out in terms of payoff on something like this?
Well, number one, the subdivision and the roads and everything in there belong to the county, it's not ours. The only thing that belongs to us is the water, and yes, we have approved the water and the design of the water, and it's designed so there could be further extensions of it at a later date, but we have approved that, and that's the only thing we're responsible for.
Thank you.
If I didn't answer your question, I'll be...
Mr. Harris, this is maybe a bigger question for another time, but I mean, when we assume liabilities on streetlights, drainage, roads, water, have we done studies to find out? I mean, is there a payoff time on these, or how does that? I mean, it seems to be normal procedure, but I mean, have we done the study to figure out when, how does this work eventually?
Well, when you say payoff time, I'm assuming you assume we have an investment. We don't have an investment. The developer pays for everything, and we approve the design of what he did. So it automatically becomes ours. He has a two-year guarantee on it that he has to pay for anything that goes wrong, and we automatically have a customer base, but we have no real investment. So we, we have revenue coming in soon as they start building lots.
We have future obligations. That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to get at. We're, we have...
And the fact that the water line belongs to us.
Okay, on this one, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, on this one.
And Dr. Corley, it may be helpful, too. So from the design standpoint, our utilities approve the design, they work with the developer on the approved design, we watch it go in, we inspect it, you know, so we're comfortable because, to your point, once, once it's our responsibility, it's our responsibility forever. So, so we're part of the design, part of the actual construction, making sure it's literally our, we're getting the approval with State D Act to be a part of our system. So we're with it the whole way, because we're going to own it right on and on.
Thank you. That's all, I wanted to be reassured.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else? We have a motion to approve the Section 5 of Stonecroft 2 subdivision, maintenance guarantee, bill of sale.
So move.
Second.
Merchant moves, Mr. Lowery seconds. Is there further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. It is approved unanimously. Next, we have the same thing as to some lots along Conifer Street in Stillpoint subdivision.
Mr. Mayor, council members, again, this is a subdivision inside the city, so with this maintenance agreement, indeed a dedication, we are accepting everything from roads, storm drainage, water, sewer, curbing, gutter, all the responsibilities. We have worked with them with their designs, we have inspected everything. And again, the maintenance guarantee covers a two-year period, 15% of the cost of construction, which is $37,953.15. It will all belong to us from this point forward, and everything is in order, it's been, it's going very well. They've done a good job with it, we're satisfied, and we would like to recommend approval if you'd like to do so. And any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
Recommend, second.
Davis moves, Mr. Hasty seconds that we approve the guarantee, maintenance guarantee, deed of dedication for the lots on Conifer Street in Stillpoint subdivision. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And it is unanimously approved. We do need to have an executive session to discuss some contractual matters, and perhaps to discuss boards and commissions. Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yeah, I want to...
An executive session?
No, sir, I want, before we go into the session.
Go ahead.
I noticed on the agenda, there's no opportunity for council members to speak, there's no opportunity for the city manager to give an update. Is there a reason for that?
Just to expedite, since we are in these times where we're trying to get in and out as quick as we can.
Well, I think city council members should be given an opportunity to speak...
Is that a motion? You want a motion to...
Well, no, this is a question. Why don't we have the city council members on the agenda to make comments?
That was my decision, because I felt we needed to get in and out as quickly as possible. It's one of the reasons I want to get downstairs as quickly as we can, so we can get back to normal as much as possible.
I just don't think that's proper. We have things to contribute, and the citizens need to at least hear it, what's going on. And for someone to not allow, elected officials not to say a word at a city council meeting, doesn't seem to be proper.
Are you being recognized? I mean, you can go ahead and say it.
Oh, that's what I would like to do, then.
Go ahead.
Okay, good. And Joe, I don't mean to be disrespectful now, I don't want you to think that, but I have some things I want to bring up, okay? You all know about the Boys and Girls Club. We've got new management, and they have, they've got 40 slots for the summer. And they have offered, for the children that live around the park, 15 slots where they will waive the registration fee. So the entire time for the summer, from June 22nd through August 15th, is about $200 per child. So I've already talked to the city manager about helping out some kind of way. He's going to talk with others, but I may even come to some of you all, because it's only $200 per child, we've got 15 children, we could probably do that ourselves. I may go through my fraternity to ask for assistance, and our, some of the churches that we've talked about before. So I just want to let you know, we've been having some trouble with that Boys and Girls camp since they've been at Southside Gym, and with the new management, it's really wonderful to talk to folks that want to help people in that area.
Not trouble, you just mean not, we hadn't any problems there? It's just been not having local kids that live in the area?
That's right. That's right. We didn't have many local kids, and that was the complaint of the local folks. Well, the Boys and Girls Club is in our neighborhood, and, and we couldn't afford to go to it, because the price was pretty much doubled last year, but now it's going back to $20. And, and then you look at the numbers, maybe $200 to sponsor a child for the whole summer. So I think we ought to be able to assist with that. And we have a lot of community groups that want to do that. Farmers Market on Manning Avenue will have its grand opening on, on this Friday from 2:00 to 6:00, and ask you all to come out and support us in that. And lastly, I see this picture where the chief of police took this picture with gang members, and I guess the question is, I'm sure there is, are there follow-up meetings? What's the next step? Because a lot of folks were planning on meeting with the same group of young men, and I was discouraging them. I said, "We don't need four or five churches to meet with these young men. If the chief of police is already talking to them, then that's all that's needed for the City of Sumter."
I would ask that you discuss that with the chief, if you would, but I believe the impetus for that was that the young men did exactly what they said they were supposed to do, and you should recognize positive, positive steps. But I would, I would recommend you talk to the chief about that.
Okay, I will. Thank you, Joe.
Okay, we do need an executive session to consider contractual matters. Okay, we do need an executive session to consider contractual matters, boards and commissions, anything else, Mr. McCormick?
I'm not aware.
Or no personnel matters. I should consider boards and commissions, personnel. Is there a motion?
Motion to go into executive session for the stated reasons.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.